Twenty-one, meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. This meeting is being held electronically to protect public health and safety due to the COVID-19 virus and to comply with orders issued by the governor, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and/or the Washtenaw County Health Department. We intend to conduct this meeting similarly to an in-person meeting. However, please be patient if there are technical difficulties. Public comment will be made via telephone only. To speak during any of the public comment opportunities, please call 877-853-5247 or any of the other numbers that were published on the agenda, but enter meeting ID 990-9896-8122. This information is also available on the published agenda, in the public notices section of the city website, and on the broadcast of this meeting on CTN, Channel 16, AT&amp;T, Channel 99, and online at A2gov.org/watchCTN. And once you're there, you select the government channel. We're up to item two on the agenda, which is the roll call.
Commissioner Mills.
Present.
Commissioner Millsstein. I see you.
Present. Is this where we say from Ann Arbor, Michigan?
You don't have to do that yet, not till April. Commissioner Gibb Randall. Commissioner Sauvay.
Here.
Commissioner Abrams.
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Here.
Commissioner Dish.
Present.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Yeah.
You have a call.
Very good. Item number three is introductions, but it doesn't look like we have any. Is that right? All right. Then we're up to item four, which is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Millsstein, seconded by Commissioner Abrams. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion as read? Please raise your hand or say yes. That is everyone. It passes. Item five is minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 2nd, 2021 meeting? Moved by Commissioner, I was thinking Commissioner Clark, but I, Commissioner Sauvay, seconded by Commissioner Millsstein. Any discussion of the minutes? All in favor of the motion as read? Please raise your hand or say yes. That is everybody. Motion carries. We are on to item six, which are all of the reports from city administration, planning, city council, planning manager, commission officers and committees, and written communications. And I would point out that there are a couple of packets that came out, including some late ads from Mr. Leonard. Thank you for those, Mr. Leonard. First up, Councilmember Dish, do you have any report for us?
I do, I do. Many things happened last night that pushed along things that Planning Commission has been working on. So we had the annexation, the petitioner-initiated annexation of 2731 Newport got approved. The annexation at 201 Sciouche Church, also petitioner-initiated, got approved, as you know. The R2A zoning got approved of that. Lewis Jewelers, there was excitement about the pedestrian connection from South Maple to West Gate Shopping, and that was approved. We did the first reading for the rezoning of 700 North Main from PUD to R4C. The zoning will return on April 19th for a second reading and a public hearing. And at that time, the accompanying site plan will also appear. I gave them a little preview of the details, and they are really happy that this site will have things on it because it has been a very long time. I was hoping for more applause for the electric heating and the 23 EV charging stations, but it is possible that when they see the picture, they will be more inclined to applaud. And some expressed that they are looking forward to hearing about our planned product, project revisions. And if I've left anything out, I welcome additions.
Very good. Mr. Leonard, do you have any additions or anything else to add?
Some additional items to preview. Next week, the ordinance revisions committee meeting. The committee will be discussing three topics. Site plan review thresholds, which is sort of building upon the previous review. Hopefully, finalization of language of transit zoning district, and some proposed amendments to the city's home occupation regulations. Some suggestions that staff is bringing forward in the context of maybe what we've learned over the past year. And then just sort of long-term on the horizon, well, not so long-term on the horizon, our April 20th meeting is scheduled to be a joint meeting with the Transportation Commission. It will also be the public hearing for consideration of the city's updated comprehensive transportation master plan. And then, thanks to the commissioner for your flexibility, we're still working on finalization, but it's looking more and more likely the May working session, on May 11th, will be a joint session with the Energy Commission, where Dr. Stoltz from the city's Office of Sustainability and Innovations is secured presentation by the Rocky Mountain Institute on Electrification of New Developments. Some information that the Planning Commission has requested to learn a little bit more about. So those are some, just wanted to sort of preview those, more details to come, but also some great opportunities for collaboration with other city boards and commissions.
Very good. Thank you. Any other commissioner officers or committee liaisons have anything to report out? Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know, last week was the inaugural meeting of the Council of the Commons, which is the group that has been assembled to look at next steps for the library lot. Seems like a really great and passionate group. I think we're all very committed to shaping the future of the library lot in a way that equitably benefits our community. We did move the meetings from the second Thursday of the month to the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. So I will provide more updates as needed.
Very good. Thank you. Any other committee liaisons have anything to report? Okay, very good. We're on item number seven then, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes about an issue that is not listed as a public hearing on this agenda. We have one public hearing on the agenda, and that is the accessory dwelling units. So if you would like to make a comment on any other matter, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 990-9896-8122. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand, calling on you by the last three digits of your telephone number. To digitally raise your hand, please press star nine on your telephone. When you hear, you'll hear an automated announcement that the host is allowing you to speak, and then you'll need to unmute your phone, and you do that by pressing star six. When speaking, please move to a quiet area and mute any television or background sounds so that we can hear you clearly. And please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Again, if you're on the line and would like to address the Planning Commission during this public comment opportunity about anything other than ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, you press star nine on your phone to raise your hand.
Caller with a phone number ending with 534. Caller with a phone number ending with 534. You have three minutes to address the question.
Good evening. This is Tom Stalberg calling from Lower Town. I had an interaction on social media this past week where a gentleman insisted that I was against everything. And that really made me think about how maybe I present myself because I'm for so much and really against very little. And if anybody, I don't think he watches the meetings, by the way. Just, maybe I've developed a reputation, but in my mind, my reputation is being for things. I've been for for a long time and publicly stated at Planning Commission meetings even, before mostly you were on Planning Commission at public hearings. Transit corridor zoning. The concept is something I've been for and advocated for a long time. I'm very much in favor of the planned project replacement that you're doing. I've advocated for that for a long time, and I'm very pleased to specifically with that one because it bakes right in there, directly addressing our sustainability and affordability goals. And some of our other things tend to do it indirectly. I like it when it's done directly, whether that's a premium or how the planned project modification is going. Some of the best practices from other communities in ADUs involve directly addressing affordable housing, not indirectly, but directly. Same with sustainability measures. So I may be a stickler for process. I don't mind admitting to that. I think we should be doing a master plan before doing all the sweeping changes that we're doing now. I think we end up with a better solution if we go through the process the way that it's supposed to be done. When you make these big of changes, it really does call for the master plan to be revised. And I'll give you an example on transit corridors. We're talking about, should we do all or part of the corridors? And by the way, Alexis Delio did a great job with the the presentation that she gave and the materials that she put together. But should we do all or some of a corridor? All or some of the corridors, or part of a corridor, or the full corridor? Should we mass zone them or do them one at a time? My personal opinion is if we did a master plan revision, take one, maybe the South State Street area first, and do that, staff-led, not even paid consultant, that we'd go through that process and it would shake out the right way to do it. The nature of going through a process often shakes out what the obvious right solution would be. And in that case, it would
Thirty more seconds.
In a mass way, for sections of a corridor identify on a map where we want those changes to be. That's part of a master plan process. And then those, when somebody individually asks for rezoning, they've already been identified, they would then meet the new master plan. So it solves itself if we follow the process. So that's why I'm a stickler for the process because we get better outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else on the line would like to address the Planning Commission during this opportunity for public comment, please press star nine to digitally raise your hand.
Caller with the phone number ending with 556. Caller with the phone number ending with 556. You have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Hi, this is Ralph McKee. Can you hear okay?
We can.
I guess I just wanted to make a general comment about looking at big picture and looking at numerous viewpoints on any topic, whether that's ADUs, transit oriented zoning, or any of the other big picture items that you're looking at now, of which there are many. And I read with some interest the the, a lot of the materials that were, that are posted tonight with regard to ADUs. And while I'm not focusing on those specifically, I think they illustrate something that we ought to do here. And that is, again, looking at all sides of it. I think it's worth noting that in those, in those pieces, and also in several other pieces that I've seen, a couple of which I've forwarded pieces of to you in prior emails, there are, in all of these other places that we're comparing or looking at, there are other programs which are tied in to whatever the zoning changes are. There, in Portland or in Seattle, there are programs to figure out how to help homeowners get loans so that they don't have to sell the property to an investor. There are, in, in, in all of the California cities, there are inclusionary zoning policies or some attempts to facilitate that type of ability to get lower-income people into housing are always, 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 in every single city, there, there are those types of programs which are being worked on heavily with the zoning changes. And I think we really need to think about that because I don't see any of that going on here. There may be a lot of, in all of your collective heads, you know, thinking about those things, but we're not doing them. And I think every urban planner that I've engaged with on this topic has indicated that the zoning changes are not going to get affordability done by themselves. Just not the free, that, as Patrick Condon in the Vancouver Urban Planner at the University of British Columbia stated, the free market is not going to get it done. And we, we need to really think about the baking-in concept or some other way
Thirty more seconds.
to get other programs which would work hand in hand rather than just concentrating solely on the zoning changes. Thank you.
If anyone else wishes to address the Planning Commission on, on anything other than accessory dwelling units, you can press star nine now to raise your hand. All right. We will move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is number eight, the public hearings for the next business meeting.
Yes, we've got four new public hearings scheduled for the April 6th Planning Commission meeting. One is in addition to an existing building for city council approval. Central Property Development Incorporated is proposing a 300-square-foot elevated addition at the rear of an existing building in a non-residential zone district. Proposed addition includes a deck and covers a portion of the surface parking spaces on a .1-acre site. This is a, you don't see too many single-family site plans. This is because it's not in a residentially zone district as per our UDC. A second public hearing, extraordinary individuals childcare center special exception use for city planning commission approval. Request for special exception use approval for a childcare center in the New Grace Apostolic Church, located at 2898 Packard Road, Zoned R1C. The third public hearing is amendment to Chapter 55 Unified Development Code to create a new zoning district for transit corridors for city council approval. This is the proposed zoning, transit zoning district creation. It is not assigning that district to any geographies at this time. And then the fourth public hearing is proposed amendments, as I referenced for the ORC discussion, proposed amendments to modify home occupation regulations in Section 5.68 of Chapter 55 of the Unified Development.
Very good. Thank you. We are on item nine then, our unfinished business. This is the proposed amendments regarding accessory dwelling units within Chapter 55. Mr. Ching, welcome.
Thank you. I hope, I hope everybody's having a good evening. I do have the PowerPoint presentation from the March 2nd, and I'm happy to go over it again if members find that that's going to be helpful. But I'm not planning on rehashing that, but we do have it if you want to reference any of the previous slides or some of the language. I was hoping to answer, or at least give out statistics and data, and respond to a lot of the concerns, I think, that came up from the previous meeting. Let's see, I've got a whole list of them here, so let's go through. I'm gonna let's start with, okay. Since I've got this one up. All right, can everybody see this? And I guess I'll have to scroll down a little bit. One of the items that came up at the previous staff meeting was the setbacks for the proposed accessory dwelling units. This is a typical picture. I'm just going to use this as a, a single-family home in a residential district, which typically has a front setback, two-side setbacks, and a rear setback. Typically, the accessory dwelling unit or accessory structure is required to be a minimum of three feet from the side and the rear property line. As you can see here, if you were to attach to the principal structure, it would have to be in this white area that we call the building envelope. So it'd have to be built in there. But for, in this case, I think we're focusing on detached accessory dwelling units, which would have to be three feet from the side and the rear, and cannot take up more than 35% of this rear yard area. Just for discussion as we go off through the meeting, if we'd like to change, you know, the, the minimum setbacks to five feet for that accessory structure, I think that's a great conversation. It probably is just for reference, once again. This isn't a bad place that, what about for a side lot? Or I'm sorry, a corner lot? Again, you've got two frontages in this case. You've got the side, and then you have the rear, which the accessory dwelling unit would go behind the front setback into the rear yard, not taking up, again, more than 35%. So we can use that as reference as far as accessory dwelling units for further setback. Accessory dwelling unit locations. Let's see. Also going to, let's see, what else do I have? Let's get into, I believe some questions came up regarding renting the accessory dwelling unit. I'm just going to briefly read some of this section, maybe not the whole section. This was in the staff report. They came up with how these accessory dwelling units are taxed. This information is from the city assessors department. An ADU assessment property, assessed property owners with one-unit properties are eligible for 100% principal residential exemption. That's the PRE if they occupy at least 50% of the home as their principal residence. I think this came up from one of the commissioners that was inquiring about, what if somebody lives in their home and they're renting out to a couple of people? So assuming that they're taking up more than 50% of the home, they still get 100% PRE. Again, if they occupy less than that, then they would be eligible for the percentage they occupy. When there are multiple units on a property, including an ADU, the property is no longer eligible for 100% PRE. This is true whether it is rented or not. I think this came up at the last meeting. What happens if somebody's staying there for free? It's a family member, or it's just you're letting somebody stay there. It could be completely vacant, rented for free, or used by the homeowner for another purpose. And as long as there are separate units on the property, the property is only eligible for a partial PRE in accordance with the value of the unit occupied by the principal residence. The next section is just, this is what the assessor's office is going to ask you to attest to. But I'll just conclude that the overall assessment is a compilation of the value of the land and all of the physical components of a property. If there's a detached ADU on a property, the value for that separate building or portion of building is subtracted from the overall value of all the property's physical improvements in order to determine the value of property improvements that are eligible for a PRE. That determined percentage applicable to this principal residence is the overall portion eligible for a PRE. I know it's a lot to sift through, but I do know if there are disagreements or residents want to appeal this, there is a tax tribunal, so there's always a chance to go back and, and challenge if other people are getting charged something differently for their ADU. Can always come back to that. Let's see, what other questions? Let me see if I've got more that I can share with staff. Let's see here.
Chris, if you could pull up, one thing I'd like to share with the commission is the ADU fact sheet that was in the press release and social media.
Correct. Can, can you see it right now?
No, not yet.
Not yet. One second here. Let's go. I can see it. Unfortunately, here we go. There. Can you see it now? Great. And as Brett had just mentioned, this was also part of the staff report and sent, sent out with the press release to the public and with the social media blitz that we had. This is really, I think, a real good fact sheet, just that really kind of generalizes the proposed changes and what we're, what's existing and what's proposed. So are single-family used properties eligible currently for attached? Yes, they are. Yes. So you can see in the, what we're proposing in the proposed code. Are multiple-family used properties eligible currently? No, they are not, both in the current and the proposed language. Same with detached accessory units, they are not. But if we were to approve this, those N's are going to turn into Y's. Allowed the single-family and R2A zoning districts currently as the code is written, yes, they are.
I just, I just want to correct something there. So this is actually used properties. So actually, nothing would, that would not change. There's no, nothing in the proposed amendments will allow an ADU on a multiple-family property.
That's
So regardless of zoning districts, any multiple-family used properties would not be eligible.
And those are, you know, the R3s and the R4s, and even the R2As if you happen to have duplexes on them, R2A and B. Allowed in other residential districts, current code? No, they are not. I think that's what Brett was just alluding to. Yes, proposed code, we are going to allow those in other residential districts with a single-family home on now. Current code, no. Proposed code, yes. And that's for the detached. Does the property owner have to live on-site currently? It is required. What's being proposed? It is not. But if we, the current code, yes, it's required. Again, it would not be required if we make the proposed changes. Is a deed restriction required? Yes. But again, and it's yes for both of those, but no in both the proposed code for the attached and detached. And is a minimum lot size required? Yes, it is 5,000 square feet currently. But no, we're looking at relaxing those both for the attached and detached. And then finally, is additional parking required? Yes, it is, but we're looking at removing that language. So proposed for attached and detached, no, it would not. And we can always go back to any of these, these sheets. Let me go to additional information. Okay, can you see the water rates sheet handout? Great. This again, I think, was brought up at one of the meetings regarding, well, what will the, will, will it increase the tiers? No, for the ADU. It will be based on the residential one. I think what may be a little confusing is it depends on how much, since they're going to be cooked up for the same water meter. The more water you use, the more you're going to get charged. So 1 through 9 CCF is at 201. And then as you keep increasing, that rate does go up, but you're still under the tier one. I had to look it up myself. I didn't know what a CC1 is. 1 CCF equals 100 cubic feet, which is 748 gallons, which is a standard measurement of water. So it still stays under the same tier. It's not going to move up into, you know, residential two or, you know, multi-family rates. They're going to be on the same water meter, but as you use more water, your rates will go up. Let's see. We also, I will say that Jeff Kahn's also We also, I will say that Jeff Kahn's also available in this meeting. If we have any questions, I think some questions that arose from how Seattle, Portland, Vancouver, maybe California have dealt with, with those, so he's, he's open to answering any of those questions. The definition of family was also included in the previous staff report. We can refer to that, but it is in the staff report. And I think as far as the, the information that I was going to present with handouts, that concludes my presentation, but I can refer back, like I said, to any of those handouts or the previous PowerPoint presentation, and I'm open to any questions you may have, and maybe Brett's got some more to add.
Thank you, Mr. Cheng. Doesn't look, Brett, like you have anything. So let's open the public hearing and then we'll, I'll read the motion and we'll get to discussion and asking those questions of Mr. Cheng. This is an opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes about the proposed amendments to the UDC regarding accessory dwelling units. To clarify, we will allow anyone to participate in the ADU public hearing, even if you've made a comment at previous meetings. There was, in our, in our last change to the bylaws, kind of previous precedent, like that was one of the changes that we made. And so we will allow anyone to speak again or for the first time at this public hearing. Public comment may be made by calling eight seven seven eight five three five two four seven and then entering meeting ID nine nine zero ninety-eight ninety-six eighty-one twenty-two. City staff will select callers that have raised their hand, calling on you one by one by the last three digits of your telephone number. Again, you raise your hand digitally by pressing star nine on your telephone. Around the same time that Mr. Leonard calls the last three digits of your telephone number, you should get an automated message that you, the host is allowing you to speak. Please move to a quiet area, mute any background sound, including television, the television, so that we can hear you clearly. And please also state your name and address at the beginning of your comment, and please do keep your comment to three minutes or less. We've got a number of people in line, so, again, star nine if you want to join the queue.
Caller with the phone number ending with four one one, caller with the phone number four one one, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard and Commissioner Mills. My name is James Demore, and I am a former member of this body, having served in the mid-two thousands. There, I wanted to share some thoughts to you as we review these accessory dwelling units language tonight. Certainly, in my time and for many years, there's been great interest in these and many aspects, they are promising in the city, encountering perennial growth pressures. That being said, my thoughts, we need to consider loss of open space if standalone buildings are more easily permitted. Setbacks need to be considered when standalone buildings are constructed to neighbors' trees. Building too close to neighbors' property could potentially mean the removal of someone else's prized landmark tree. I'm pleased to see tonight Mr. Cheng addressing some of these concerns. But I do wanna bring the terms of the fact that when we talk about putting more pervious surface in and removing trees, how's a square with A-two-zero goes of improving the tree canopy? I've also seen discussed in, on social media on the city, calling for abandonment of language in ordinance that stipulates that ADUs must be built, that are properties that are owner-occupied. I see that the language that proposed tonight is calling for that. My concern with this is, is if we were to abandon this premise, we very well may be virtually redesignating R-one zoning as R-two and upward in certain neighborhoods of the city. These changes could have a significant impact on the character, potentially quality of life of the city, as well as environmental impacts. To be sure, I'm not speaking necessarily against these changes, but such changes require sweeping public engagement. This really needs to be folded into the overall city master plan revision process, as a previous speaker had said. That being said, looks like a lot of good work here, and thank you for considering my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with eight two zero. Caller with the phone number ending with eight two zero, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
You're very faint. Is there any way to turn up your volume?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Great. My name is Victoria and I live on Henry Street. While I am not opposed to denser housing, I am opposed to the way the commissioners are going about this ADU process. I have serious concerns about the deep lack of intention being displayed towards mitigating against harmful consequences. The planning commissioner stated several goals for this sudden interest in rushing through these dramatic ADU changes. Most of them, like family elder care and housing adult children, is already served by the ordinance as is. The proposed changes primarily would benefit people or organizations with enough capital to build ADUs as a way to enrich themselves through rental income. By doing so, the planning commission says it would create denser, more diverse housing and increase housing affordability, but these proposed ADU changes is a wholly inefficient way to meet both goals. I can see that in the aggregate, there can be some affordability benefits when increasing housing density. As a former New York City resident, I think a lot of good can come from denser housing beyond affordability, like more vibrant communities and less sprawl, but if we're not careful or strategic, and so far this ADU proposal is neither, we can consign neighborhoods to rapidly increasing housing prices as we pursue denser housing. ADUs are expensive to build. That means the kind of people who build ADUs as a way to earn more money through rent will likely be wealthier people, investors, or management companies. Expensive builds lead to expensive rents. If the city wants to promote denser, more affordable housing, there are much more transparent ways to do so, including the city's ongoing conversation about rezoning around transit borders. Instead, the planning commission in this case has opted for a speedy and covert attempt to essentially change zoning designations under people's notice, which make no mistake, that's essentially what's happening here when we're proposing properties that were once single-family units can now hold multiple-family units. There are so many options available to encourage more diverse and denser housing, yet the planning commission has set its sight on increasing more ADUs just two years after less dramatic proposed ADU changes failed. I asked the commission, what is the rush? Who's asking for this? And are there more effective ways to address housing density and affordability? I end by reiterating that by removing the owner occupancy requirement for building an ADU and allowing ADUs on non-owner-occupied properties to be rented, this ordinance would effectively subject all single-family residential areas to potential rezoning. Whether or not you're for more ADUs-
Thirty more seconds.
-and whether or not the proliferation of ADUs would actually increase affordable housing, I don't understand how the proposed ADU changes can be interpreted as anything but a growth circumvention of the current rezoning protocol. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with three two six. Caller with the phone number ending with three two six. You have three minutes to address the thing.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Oh, great. My name is Jeff Crockett. I live at five oh six East Kingsley. And two years ago, when the ADU proposal first came up, I expressed concern to you, to this group about how the enforcement was gonna work. And the response I got from one of the planning commission members at the time was that enforcement is up to the neighborhood. I was very concerned with that response. So several weeks ago, when this matter, the amendments were brought up, I once again expressed my concern about enforcement and specifically requested that this be included in the agenda for conversation, or at least, I was hoping that perhaps the staff report would include an enforcement provision. But I saw the enforcement provision several days ago, and it included nothing about enforcement. Now, this is, I sent two letters expressing my concern, so I'm very serious about this. And just for the public, the questions I wanted answered were, what is the enforcement plan? Has a complaint form been identified? Because you can't just say you should report something on an email without knowing what the proper format is gonna be. There should be some consistency, just as it is in the A-two-fix-it program. Will a case number be assigned to each complaint? It makes it easier to track. Will neighbors of ADU applicants be informed in advance of the intent to build an ADU? That is just a common courtesy. So because this ordinance is so complicated, it would give a little time for residents to look at the ordinance and see if the ordinance is being fulfilled or not. Will the description of each complaint and its outcome be published? If so, where? This is already done with A-two-fix-it. By making it transparent, it allows the community to know where, if a later management company buys a piece of property before, if it is, the ordinance has been violated. And finally, has the staffing needed, needed to enforce the ordinance been considered?
Thirty more seconds.
Frankly, I have not seen in any ordinance revisions being proposed, and this should be a real change. The, there should be in the report an estimate of how much time it should take for the ordinance to be enforced. Otherwise, if you don't have, we're increasing, we're adding a couple ordinance, a number of ordinances now. If we don't have the staffing, there will be no enforcement. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Again, if you're on the phone and would like to make a public comment, please press star nine to indicate that.
Caller with the phone number ending with six seven seven. Caller with the phone number ending with six seven seven. You can unmute your phone and address the planning commission.
Hi, this is Michelle Hughes, and I'm calling to say that I am in favor of these ADU changes. I think that we have a housing crisis going on, and anything that helps us get new housing built is gonna help us take care of the housing crisis. It's, it's gonna allow there to be, you know, two units of housing where previously there was one, and I think that, you know, if that's, yeah, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a great way to add density to neighborhoods without, you know, totally tearing up the neighborhood and, and building, and building new things. And more neighbors means potentially more cool neighbors, and that's what I like to see in town. And so, yeah, I think we've, we've, it's been the, the planning commission and the city, and the city councils intent to have ADUs in town, since, you know, we know, we know that they've passed ADU ordinance before, but it's, we haven't seen very many ADUs actually being built. So if, so I think it's reasonable and prudent to make some changes to address the causes of the ADUs not being built, if we, if indeed we want to see ADUs be built. So it seems like these change, the proposed changes here go to address the causes of why we're seeing ADUs not be built, and I hope it works. I wouldn't mind having some more cool neighbors around here, thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with four five five. Caller with the phone number ending with four five five. You can unmute your phone and address the planning commission. Caller with the phone number ending with four five five, you can press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission.
Hello, is that me?
It is.
Yep. Okay, great. My name is John Baronic. I live in the north central neighborhood, which is an R-four-C zone neighborhood. I mean, I would just like to say in general, I support ADUs and density, and, you know, I understood when I moved into an R-four-C neighborhood that that meant, you know, multi-unit properties, you know, around my neighborhood. However, I, and I, the way I understand, the way the proposal's being written now is that properties that are multi-use properties, you know, that are using R-two or R-four construction will not be allowed to have ADUs. But, I mean, I think something that needs to be addressed in this zoning is the kind of current abuse of the loophole of the six non-related people in one house. So we have a lot of properties in this neighborhood and other neighborhoods where, you know, instead of the six unrelated people in a house being part of a group home, what the management companies have done have, has essentially have built six-unit apartment buildings that masquerade as a single-family home. So you've got, you know, six units, six leases, six people coming and going at all different times that are not, you know, a related unit family. And, and that, those houses are single-family homes. Even though there are six-unit, six-rental-unit place, they are considered by zoning an R-one property. And under the way the current zoning is written, that you're gonna allow an accessory dwelling unit on those properties. So again, you're gonna have six units plus another accessory dwelling unit, which could have more people. So you're talking, you know, fourteen plus people could be living on one property that's really only capable of having a single-family home on it. So, I mean, to me, that's something that really needs to be addressed, I mean, in general, but definitely needs to be addressed as part of this accessory dwelling unit addition. So, I guess, just a last comment, I mean, to me, like as a homeowner, like these zoning laws are kind of my contract with the city that I expect them to enforce, because when I decided to buy in this neighborhood and, you know, invest in my property, you know, I, I expect these zoning laws to be respected. So, you know, if I'm suddenly living next to, you know, if I'm suddenly living next to a place that has fourteen people living on it, that's not what I bought into in my neighborhood community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with zero seven seven. Caller with the phone number ending with zero seven seven. You can unmute your phone and address the planning commission.
Yeah, hi, this is Eric Zecher over in Ward two, two four three five Prairie, if you need my address. I'm an Ann Arbor resident and I'm a homeowner, and I'd just like to say that I am very in favor of the changes that are proposed today for the ADUs. I have considered building an ADU at my house, but my lot is a corner lot, and it's very non-conforming for the current ADU situation. And our house is nice for now, but I'd like to have a smaller area that I could age in place, and I think an ADU would be a great way to do that. And if I could build it now, I could maybe, you know, help pay off my mortgage or anything. So for me, it would be a great idea. I think it'd be great for my neighborhood to have some new housing in a great neighborhood that is built up already. We're already built on all the lots here, so it's not like we're gonna get any more density in my neighborhood any other way. ADUs aren't the whole solution to our problems in Ann Arbor, but they're a part of it, they're a small part of our solution. I don't understand these callers that are talking about things being rammed through, quote unquote, at these public hearings. They're public hearings. As far as I remember, we've been talking about ADUs for years now, and if this does get past the planning, it's going to likely go to council, and I'm sure there will be a few public hearings there. So ramming through is not exactly what I would consider it. And as far as all the requirements right now to build may do, like, we do not require notice to our neighbors. If I wanted to build an outbuilding, if I wanted to build a shed, a garage, something to house a car in, I wouldn't have to talk to my neighbors about it. I could just build a garage. I can build it almost right up to the lot line. I can build it, you know, with a basic permit. So why are we making it easier to build a place for a house, I'm sorry, for a, a car to live? Why wouldn't we make it easy for a car to be housed in our city, but not easy for a person? ADUs could be a really great way to house people. Renters would be able to live in areas where previously only homeowners could live, and that's great, great to add diversity to our neighborhoods, and I welcome them. I hope you do plan it, and I thank you for considering it.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with zero three zero. Caller with the phone number ending with zero three zero. You can unmute your phone and address the planning commission.
This is David Stakes. I live on Belmont Road in Ann Arbor. I'm a homeowner. I'd like to express several concerns with the proposed changes. The first regards the parking change. Many neighborhoods in Ann Arbor require residential housing to provide parking. Adding additional units without parking would result in on-street parking, which would change the character of neighborhoods. The second concern regards the change in the setbacks for residential occupied buildings, which do generate noise and traffic. This would essentially amount to allowing subdivision of any residential lot into two residences. I think that would dramatically change the character of neighborhoods and violate the basic assumption of zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with five, five, six. Caller with the phone number ending with five, five, six. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, this is Ralph McKee again, eleven sixteen Red Oak. I wanted to concentrate on today on the owner-occupied requirement and why, why not that that should be retained? And I think I wanted to respond first to sort of the generalized comments that I have heard several callers and commissioners make in the past, that we somehow assume that, that eliminating that requirement will result in, in more housing. That might be, that would probably be true. But what type of housing and what would the cost of that housing be? And I, I would want to echo the comments that, I didn't catch her name, but the lady who called in from Henry Street, everything that she said I thought was dead on point. And I would, I just read an article today, a low, a low-income housing activist in a California city who said, "All that's going to happen when you make this, this change is you're going to have, the only people that can afford to build these, given current costs, are wealthy people and people who are investors." And what's that's going to mean is that the rents in, will go up, not down. This is a low-income housing activist saying, this isn't me. I just am, am repeating something that I read a couple hours ago. And I, I think those, those arguments are, they're good arguments both sides. You really have to vet them. And I, I have not heard that done here. The, we're just sort of assuming something, and there are definitely voices from low-income activist communities that think of the opposite of what I've, what I've heard loosely thrown around in some conversations here. And I, I think, I wanted to focus on one other comment about that, that keeping, uh, avoiding investor buys keeps houses available for the sale market for the new, new home buyers. I don't believe that that is per se anti-renter. I think there's lot, lots of ways to add rental housing, that's, that's large numbers of rental housing in, in places where it makes sense, that would have a lot bigger impact than this and would make a lot more sense than eliminating the owner-occupied requirement. I think a lot of the other changes are, are positive, and, and if we can figure out some way to get, to enable homeowners to build them, uh, some loan programs and things like that, that would be great. But I don't think you should eliminate the owner-occupied requirement, and many of the people that wrote you today said the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with five, three, four. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Thank you. This is Tom Stalberg calling from Lower Town. Um, I want to address the caller who talked about zoning and expectations, and he's spot on. I've been in real estate nearly 30 years, and my father was a real estate developer. Uh, I grew up with this stuff, and zoning is a lot about expectations. And that's why we have master plan process too. I mean, I'll beat that to death. But that's where we engage the community, and we ask the community, uh, to, to work with the city and come up with a vision of what everybody wants. It's not going to be unanimous, but it's a group decided vision. Uh, and that's where, you know, expect, people do buy in their neighborhoods with certain expectations. You might buy next to a park, a city park, with a certain expectation. Uh, you might own a house next to a house zoned office, and you know, when you bought your house, the house next door could be torn down and an office put up. Uh, that was part of the expectations. So when we're drastically changing people, uh, what the situation's going to be compared to what their expectations are, that really does point back to why a master plan revision is the proper process before we have a sweeping change that's going to impact 20,000 residents across the city. This is a conversation that belongs to 99% of them, not what was happening right now, which is a conversation that 99% of them have no idea that's going, if this is going on. Most people hear ADU, and they think, oh, that's great, a granny flat, the traditional things they think about ADU. They're not back thinking about a detached 800 square foot house where both houses could be rental properties. Um, and they're not thinking about it all the way back to three feet from the property line. So those people aren't paying attention. 99% of the people aren't paying attention. So I'm also a buyer's broker, uh, and I've contacted some of my clients. And I have clients that live in a homeowners association subdivision. There's rules they have in place that work for business, but the building department isn't going to check those. They're going to issue a permit. The owner who wants to build an ADU is going to be in conflict with their neighbors if this permit is issued, because this is a buy right, the way we're doing it. Again, if we have the proper process and people's expectations are, are set, then we won't run into all these problems. And then lastly, as a landlord, now I have some duplexes and some fairly small houses with big yards, and I can take, if I'm reading, if I'm reading you wrong, it's right, I can take my small house that has a one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit in it. I can convert that back to one house with four bedrooms in it, and then I can build a second 800 square foot four-bedroom house in the backyard. So in my R2, I would have two habitable units. So I, I would be increasing the density. I'm just letting people know that as a landlord, I can think about how I can make money. ADUs are there for a certain goal. Let's make sure what we're doing with this ordinance is achieving the goal that we want to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Callers on the line, if you would like to speak at this public hearing, please press star nine on your phone to raise your hand.
Caller with the phone number ending with two, six, nine. Caller with the phone number ending with two, six, nine. Press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission. Go ahead.
Hi, my name, hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Kirk Taylor, and I live at 2055 Mershon Drive in Lansdowne, off of Silo Church Road near South Seventh and your Pioneer. I want to thank the planning commissioners for volunteering to serve on the commission. It takes up your personal time and places you in a position of public vulnerability. Many people would not place themselves in that position if they were paid and you serve without any payer perks, and I appreciate that. Next, I want to tell you that I only heard about the proposed accessory dwelling unit changes and of this meeting because a friend told me about it. Because there are big citywide changes to people's neighborhoods in these proposed rule changes, I don't think it's right that I only heard about proposed changes and this hearing because a friend happened to tell me. Local government can be pretty arcane, especially zoning changes, even when proposed changes are huge. If you don't have a friend who is into arcane stuff like I do, I guess you don't get to be heard in Ann Arbor. That's not how it's supposed to work. A lot of us have waited for four years to get rid of a, we don't have to care what you think, government, and it seems to me it's pretty upsetting that it's moving from Washington, DC to Ann Arbor, surprisingly. Well, no one I know wants the people next door neighbors, uh, to put up a two-story rental building on either side of his backyard. Having your neighbor's homes bought up by absentee landlords who can do this without even discussing it, without even meeting you or caring what the impact is on you, is much, much worse. Can you really not get what a big change the citywide policy would be? Can you not see that investors with cash who are not interested in creating or supporting a good place to raise children will drive families out of town? Is this what you want? If your goal is to drive an entire class of people out of Ann Arbor, especially one that includes its children, I don't think you get to call yourselves progressive anymore. Maybe you have not realized how far-reaching these citywide zoning changes would be and how your process cuts voices out of the government. I ask that you tell homeowners what you're proposing and how wide-ranging the impacts would be. Uh, I'm tired of government that decides for itself which voices matter, which ones don't. And that isn't straightforward with people. I thought we were done with that. This may sound a bit harsh, I know, but more people than you know have no idea that you're proposing these big, big zoning changes. It's not right that something this huge is under the radar. I do appreciate you, appreciate you being there, and I appreciate you listening to my thoughts. Thank you.
We have one more person in the queue with their hand raised. If anyone else wishes to address the planning commission, please press star nine on your phone.
Caller six, four, four, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Kathy Boris, and I live at one, seven, two, six Charlton. And I want to thank the planning commission for the, all the, for all the hard work they do and all the, the long hours they spend. And I also want to thank the previous caller, because he was pretty wonderful. Thank you, sir. In my view, there should have been a broader discussion of whether the proposed amendments to the ADU ordinance will bring more affordable housing or more gentrification. Because it will cost $100,000 to $200,000 to build a new detached ADU, this is a wealthy person's game. People building such ADUs, whether they are Ann Arbor residents or investors from around the country or around the world, will, will not do so out of the goodness of their hearts. They will want to recoup their investment, and there is no reason to think that they will charge any less than market rate rents. So again, I am disappointed that there was no broad discussion as to whether the proposed amendment, amendments to the ADU ordinance will bring more affordable housing or more gentrification to Ann Arbor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with zero, four, three. Phone number ending with zero, four, three. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, um, my name is Cynthia Akka, and I'm at eight and Henry Street. And, um, all of the, um, points that were brought up regarding the ADU and the zoning, I agree with, but I just have just a couple things to add, and, and that is, um, the public notice. Um, there was a discussion about that at the last meeting, and, um, my take on it was that it was something that might be a bit challenging, uh, to do. And I'd like to know what the commissioners, uh, in the planning department finally decide if they're going to send these notices out to 20,000 people. Um, and the other issue I have is with parking, because I currently live on the street where the current parking says that you, um, when you build, you have two parking spaces per units. So if you have nine separate units, that means you have to have 18 parking spaces. Well, we have a situation where there's nine units, and each has six bedrooms. So now that's 54 potential parking spaces. So with the ADU, is that going to be in consideration of what's going to happen with street parking? Um, so again, those are my, uh, along with everyone else's, uh, question about zoning and how this has been thought through, and the last thing is that, how was this determined? Who brought this to the planning department where it was so urgent? Um, as I understand, there's 23 applications since 2016. So who, what is the urgency and what is the rush? And again, I please urge you to send out public notices so everyone truly knows, um, what's at stake here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If any, Commissioner Milstein? Oh, you've, you got your hand up. If anyone else on the line wishes to address the planning commission, please press star nine on your phone now to indicate that.
Caller with phone number ending with three, four, zero. Caller with the phone number ending with three, four, zero. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Yes, greetings, uh, Ann Arbor Planning Commission. This is Luis Fazquez. I'm located at 1442 Pontiac Trail in the first ward, and, um, just wanted to speak in support of ADUs. And in fact, I would love to speak in support of upzoning all of Ann Arbor. Um, I think we need to also consider getting rid of parking minimums. And, um, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing and, uh, take all of the criticism of ADUs, upzoning, and, um, other master plan reforms that are needed in our city. We have a very severe housing crisis going on in Ann Arbor, and we need to fix that. So, uh, once again, thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you. If there's anyone else on the line who wishes to address the planning commission, please press star nine on your telephone to indicate that. All right.
Don't see anybody indicating.
Very good. I will close the public hearing then and read the motion. The Ann Arbor City Planning Commission hereby recommends that the mayor and city council approve the amendments to chapter 55 zoning, section 5.15, table 5.15 dash two, and section 5.16.6 accessory uses and structures. Could I have that moved by a commissioner? Moved by Commissioner Milstein, seconded by Commissioner Sauvay? We are in discussion. Who wants to kick us off? Commissioner Sauvay?
Thank you. Um, we have a few commenters concerned about occupancy, so I'd just like to go over that with staff again. With how this is written, um, what this, the ADU would do is redistribute maximum occupancy currently based on zoning of that lot. There would be no increase in zoning, correct? And we would have two, um, unrelated persons maximum in the ADU plus whatever, you know, up to whatever's left, which I, I'm sure in most of these cases is four unrelated and their offspring, unless we get into the R4 and above. So, um, in the couple of scenarios, we saw one that was a duplex converged back into a single-family house and an ADU added. In that case, it couldn't be two four bedrooms. In that case, we would still only have four unrelated adults on that lot, even if it was reconfigured to be a single-family and an ADU instead of a duplex, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Sauvay. You, you've got it. It's R1 and R2 up to four, but no more than two in the ADU. When you get to the R3 and the R4, it's a maximum of six, but only, again, two in the ADU. I think where some of the confusion may be coming is if, if you are in R2 and you have a duplex, then you, and you meet the minimum lot size, you could have four and four then in the duplex, but not in the ADU.
Because the duplex, we're talking unit by unit, uh, for a duplex or an R4C in that sort of circumstance, because that was kind of another one that was brought up, um, is the six non-related, and then kind of the idea that 14 unrelated people could happen. But this ordinance says it must be a single-family house with an ADU. There's no possibility of an ADU- But this ordinance says it must be a single family house with an ADU. There's no possibility of an ADU with a multi-unit building with it, correct?
That's correct. And also, just to reinforce, if these aren't owner occupied, they will be registered with the city's rental housing department. So both of them or one of them at minimum are going to be inspected. They go through the building department and housing rental for review originally. And we'll put on the documents that you can't have, you know, if we start seeing four bedrooms or something, you know, but they are capped at 800 square feet. It'll trigger some red flags. So they will be inspected. They will have regular rental inspections to ensure that they're meeting what these occupancy minimums are.
Okay. And then if, in all of these cases, kind of going to parking, we're again, not increasing the occupancy and any unit on these properties would already meet parking requirements. And so since we're not increasing occupancy, a single family could be configured with multiple bedrooms without any additional parking, right?
Yeah, that's somewhat correct. When you do add an ADU, you have the potential of adding two additional residents. So you may naturally think that, yes, they may have a car. But we're looking at changing that we're going to eliminate all of the parking requirements. And in this case, because I think just about all of the residences, single fam-, well, even for R2 and R4, they're all within a quarter mile of a bus stop. So that's why we're looking at trying to eliminate the parking requirement. It looks like Brett wants to add something also.
Yeah, I guess I heard the question a little bit different. I think if your question, Commissioner Sauvay, was regarding parking, it's similar to the occupancy. That is, if an ADU attached to a single family unit is still considered a single family unit, as you and a city planner Chang just discussed, it doesn't expand the occupancy. It redistributes the same maximum occupancy amongst the primary unit and an ADU. Likewise, I think the question of parking, we did originally have a provision in the code or we currently have a provision in the code that says additional parking is required. I think too, the question you were getting at is if we allow the same occupancy, why would the parking need to fluctuate? If it truly is a redistribution of those. So I just wanted to add that. That's what I was hearing and I think that goes hand in hand with the occupancy limits.
Yep. And I'm just trying to kind of open up, play out these scenarios based on a lot of these calls to clarify where we are and are not increasing density, intensity and those sorts of things. Because it seems like there's a lot of concerns and we just want to clarify what we've got here. The next one I want to kind of go through is single family plus an ADU versus a duplex. And that this isn't upzoning because only one person could own a lot with a single family and an ADU, where a duplex could be a split deed with two owners on site, correct?
Yeah.
That would be the main difference between, say, upzoning to, you know, R2 everywhere versus R1 with an ADU. And occupancy again doesn't change. Where in a duplex, if we were upzoning to a duplex, we could again have four and four, where this is four total. So very much different than upzoning. This is still a single family with an ADU maintaining occupancy. We're just redistributing because we understand that many single family homes probably aren't optimized and maximized for its current occupant load that's allowed by code. Where else do I want to go with this? Parking. Enforcement, that's the other thing. Enforcement per the UDC is across all of our ordinances, right? We don't customize enforcement for every single code. We have a standard procedure for any and all ordinances within the UDC, correct?
Yeah, typically, you know, to go back to that enforcement question, it is, you know, it's the neighbors who do alert us to any type of enforcement. It's not that we're actively going out and looking for this, but it'll be the neighbors who alert us. And I can't speak for our current zoning coordinator, but when I do enforcement on over occupancy in the past, we do set up file numbers in our track it system. We try to get, you know, leases from the property owner. We'll look online to make sure that they're not on VRB or Airbnb, that they're not advertising this as something that's a short-term rental. We try to look at the mailbox and see how many names are on the mailbox to indicate how many people are living there. So we do a fair amount of investigation and this is transparent. If the public wants to look into each track it or give the planner or the zoning coordinator or the enforcement person a call, we will follow up.
Great.
Now, I would just add on to that. These provisions are not atypical actually from our rental inspection program. We inspect all rental properties in the city. Those same questions about occupancy are measured, evaluated, and at times contested as part of that process. To give you a sense of scale, I don't know the exact amount, but I think we have over 30,000 units in the city that we are inspecting on a regular basis. So, you know, I totally agree with Chris, you know, and your predicate. We don't set up sort of distinct enforcement mechanisms within the UDC. But I feel that we do have the infrastructure in place to to address these proposed changes. Likely basically because we're doing similar work in a very broad basis across the city currently.
Great. I think those are many of my commenter ones I wanted to kind of raise for discussion. And then, yes. I do want to raise affordability. I know this is something that we touched on briefly last time. What would be mechanisms? There's just a cost. We've understood the tax, property tax ramifications of this and just the construction costs of this. What would be a procedures for tax abatement, percentage AMI, premiums, any other sort of things? I think we're already at the upper threshold of carrots and sticks. So putting more requirements on this is not the goal of this at this point. And so figuring out other, probably outside of the UDC. Would it be a memo to city council to recommend additional investigation into tax abatements? Partnerships with, for, you know, 60% AMI relationships with housing commissions? And like, what sort of scenarios might we play out to make those recommendations and things outside of our realm?
Just like you described, you could communicate whatever recommendations you have in that regard. I would, you know, I would, I guess I would ask the planning commission to be specific. Do you think it is sort of important to be done and answered in context of this proposed ordinance amendments if you recommend them to the city council? Or do you envision them, you know? Let me start over. However, you can clearly communicate to the city council your recommendations on the ordinance changes, either independent or in concert with those types of recommendations, I would think would be important. But if you do want to make those types of recommendations a memo or resolution that suggests that, I don't have direct answers to some of the things you're talking about. They're not really zoning related. They're not necessarily, not really even land use related to an extent. So I don't really have the answer as to where that would lie, how that would, you know, how that would be resourced. But yeah, it'd be, you know, you are advising the city council on this and it could definitely be accompanied by that kind of ancillary information or recommendations for exploration. I would just say from an affordability perspective, you know, we have these requirements with some of our other ordinances. They can be, affordability can be challenging for market rate property owners to successfully implement. It's not to say it can't be done, but when we start adding those requirements, either through premiums or through PUD, that comes with expectations of management, operation, documentation on a regular basis in consequence. And generally, I think it's probably better to approach that from maybe a financing or another entity that might support those rather than the city trying to do that on a very sort of widespread, just separate basis of a bunch of separate units with a bunch of different property owners. But in any event, whatever, I would say whatever you think the appealing outcomes would be, however you want to communicate that, that can happen. It can't be directive, obviously, and it can't be action that you take as the commission.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, where, you know, like it's been raised, this has been on the books for a couple of years. We've only seen, you know, 20 plus actually built. We know that there are multiple other inquiries into this that we can't actually calculate, which is why it's coming up again to try to loosen, make it easier with, I think, sensible regulations, but still make it easy. So for more of these to happen than only 23. So I think there's some urgency to it that we're seeing an interest, but it's not possible, which is why we're doing this now. So I support it as is. I'm open to the 5% setbacks. I'll say that for kind of further discussion there. And then I guess my last point, I just kind of wanted to raise about the ownership versus the renter. And even if these cause higher rent rates, if they're charging a lot for them, right now there isn't something to be charged for. So more units at the higher end, we've, you know, heard scenarios too where it could be some family member living in one of these instead of occupying a condo or a rental unit downtown. And so supply does have a factor into this. And if we can kind of offset, you know, in incremental ways, I think that's a benefit, even if they are at market rate. More units are better than, you know, emptier backyards and I feel comfortable with a 35%. You know, within that setback, I think there's sensible ways that we're not just getting complete and a fill of backyards for this as well. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Commissioner Sauvay, before we move on, when you said the setback, you meant five feet rather than 5%, right?
Sorry, yes. I'm good with from three to five for discussion.
That's a point of discussion, but you're not proposing it as an amendment?
No, I just kind of want to put it out there that I'm open to it as the discussion moves forward.
Great. Commissioner Dishon then, Commissioner Clark.
So thank you, Commissioner Sauvay, for asking those questions the way you did. Those were some of the things that I had noted and you did them very clearly better than I think I would have. I wanted to, I want to come back to the point you just made about council, but I want to say a couple of things first. I wanted to raise the issue of affordability. And I think we can look at this from a couple of different lenses. There's, will these be affordable in the way that we are defining affordable housing through our Housing on Public Lands project? No, they won't be, but they are small. They are small houses. There's only so much rent you can charge. And so they will be opening up in areas that were previously mostly restricted to homeowners. They'll be opening up rental housing for people who can't afford to buy in those neighborhoods or maybe not in the city at all. And they will be small houses. And as you said beautifully, you said it too beautifully for me to repeat it without mangling it. But we're not using the housing that we have efficiently and we're not using the single family parcels that we have efficiently right now because we're actually not maxed out on occupancy. And many of us might, or some of us might be more interested in maxing out on the occupancy if there were an independent dwelling rather than a person living in the bedroom next to me that isn't my offspring. So this is a very efficient way to use these parcels that were cut at a time where we weren't worried about space, where we weren't worried about climate. We can use these parcels better. I wanted to raise this, so affordability is in one way brought in by the size of these things. We can also look at the data. We can look at the data from Vancouver where 35% of their housing stock is ADUs. And you've heard me say this before, but we might have a different audience tonight. So according to a 2018 survey of ADU occupants in the Canadian city of Vancouver, one-third of ADU occupants had incomes at or below the median household income in Vancouver. So that's a good thing. That means that they are serving people who are not the wealthiest. The people who are creating them may be relatively wealthy people who can afford to build them, but the people who are living in them are not. So we want to keep that distinction clear, you know, not just who's profiting off of them, but who's using them. As last time I checked, investors can buy a house anywhere they want to in Ann Arbor. They can buy the house next door to me right now and they can rent it out right now. As our laws stand right now, when an investor buys a home, they have a couple of options. They could rent out that home. They can tear down that home, build a bigger one and either rent it or sell it for a bigger price than they bought it for. We are opening up, this law would open up, this ordinance change would open up another option for investors, which is to build a second smaller house, rent them both and accommodate two households on a lot that used to accommodate just one. There's nothing we can do to stop people from investing in houses in Ann Arbor. We can't stop that. And I would argue that the incentive that this ordinance opens up is an incentive for a better use of land than the building of 300 square foot houses, 3,000 square foot houses. And so, yes, and then I just wanted to tell you that I didn't know when I would raise this in the meeting, but I wanted to let you know what I've been thinking of as ADUs phase two. And I am really pleased that the planning commission has opened up the regulatory framework for ADUs and removed some of the regulatory obstacles such as owner occupation and the minimum lot size and a few other things and the prohibition against new detached ADUs. But now the question is, how do we reduce some of the economic obstacles and make building an ADU open as an option to people at a wider range of incomes? And I am planning to take that up with staff. I'll have some exploratory conversations and see if it's feasible. How might it be feasible? Do we use price incentives for greening these, for making them electric? Do we use price incentives for offering them as affordable? That seems complicated, but maybe. Explore this, see if there's anything here. Is it just difficult, so difficult that it's not worth the effort or not? And almost nothing is so difficult that it's totally not worth the effort. And so I suspect what I'll find is staff will give me some recommendations and then I will look to build support among my colleagues on council to create a resolution and bring that to council. So that is already on my mind that this is the next step. But that's the step after we send this round of changes to council. And so I very much appreciate your thinking about that and I would welcome anything that you all want to tell me that you would like me to look into with the help of our staff.
Commissioner Clark.
I'll be brief because I pretty much agree with everything that's been said. I just wanted to mention the, one, a quick question. Just a question about the homeowners association, just for clarity of it. Is the homeowner, if there was a homeowners association, it's not like this would override the homeowners association? That there are rules in place that forbid accessory dwelling units, those would still hold, I'm assuming? And then they would have the recourse of suing, you know, I'm not sure who, I guess the homeowners association or their neighbor. Is that true?
That's correct. Yeah, one, zoning doesn't supersede or somehow invalidate deed restrictions. However, the city is also not, doesn't have any authority or sort of party to those homeowners associations or deed restrictions. So we also don't monitor and enforce them. But in that circumstance, you as the property owner, you have to understand that you are meeting both the city requirements, which obviously we verify through the permitting process, but then also be aware and that you are compliant with any deed restrictions as a property owner at that location.
Thank you. And then just a quick comment about the affordability. And I think that this is a step in the right direction of kind of diversifying our housing stock and adding a different type and kind of what Lisa mentioned or Mr. Dish mentioned that this will be, you know, smaller sizes and the investment in neighborhoods, you know, it's here, it's coming. And whether or not they're investing in larger footprint, single family housing, even sometimes as rentals or ADUs to get the higher numbers, which would probably be better for the market as a whole. But I was going to also say that there's just one thing, like a large investor, from the standpoint of a large investor on these, managing a whole bunch of single individual units like this seems pretty intensive. Managing a whole bunch of single individual units like this seems pretty intensive on efforts and oversight. It's not like managing one complex or something of apartments. So I think that the ads of like a single investor coming in and trying to manage a whole number of these properties is pretty unlikely, almost. Pretty much, you know, not really a serious concern. And then also with the housing affordability, I think the goal should really be again to diversify the housing stock and no one's really being, keep in mind that no one's really being driven out. Owners can sell as they would like. It's not like this is forbidding anything that's currently happening. And then affordability isn't going to come with any single parcel. And I think the goal here really needs to be to increase supply. So that we can look at the aggregate and how rents change over times. And basically consider like, that's the difficulty with affordability is we're not going to necessarily see a dramatic change in rents going down overnight. That just isn't going to happen anywhere, no matter what we do. But we need to be looking at it over what's going to slow the rate of increase and what's going to prevent property prices from increasing. And the clear answer to that on across, you know, pretty much any academic study, look at in any best practice is the increasing supply will slow the rate of increase from current trajectories. It's been, I mean, that's pretty solid evidence towards that. So I think this moves us towards that and that maybe expecting this just to put directly affordable units on the market somewhat misses the bigger picture of how affordable housing comes about. I balance in the housing market, so.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Thanks. So a few things. I wanted to circle back really quickly to enforcement. And I appreciated that response. That makes a lot of sense to me. My one follow-up question would would just be, do you see the need for more staff? Or something like this to come online? Like, do you do you feel adequately equipped? To manage?
Yeah, I.
I mean, of course you need more staff, right? But like, you know, to manage to manage this process.
I do. We. I I don't anticipate that these changes would so drastically change our volume of permits and projects that that we are reviewing and and enforcing on a regular basis. As City Planner Chang said, in all of these circumstances, or in the vast majority of these circumstances, if not all. We're also going to have more touch points with these properties because we're going to be on those properties inspecting those units on a regular routine basis. So it's not to say that, you know, there won't be enforcement issues. We we do have like, like we said, we do have those, but in short, I don't know. I don't think we need to create any new structures in order to do that. But to, you know, but to Chris's point, it's 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 just a bit of a resource question, how attritional we have we've been sort of we put a lot of effort into the front end, the permitting, the review, the ensuring that things are done right. Time. We also are. We try to be responsive and transparent when complaints are investigated, brought to our attention, either through a to fix it or from emails or from phone calls. To be clear, we don't have teams of staff sort of just proactively out in neighborhoods policing zoning issues. So, yeah, you know, so these proposed changes would not, I'm not worried about our ability to implement them.
It is a transparent process already.
Yeah. And I would add, even though we've only had twenty-three in the past four years, I am unaware, and this is a very small sample size, that we've had any complaints that we've had to follow along on.
I would I would venture that we've had probably more staff resources into talking about the possibilities of these people exploring them. And there might be some challenge with our current provisions where they can't proceed. So. So but but again, I don't, I'm, I don't, we're still comfortable with that. That's that's the nature of what we do. We work with property owners and petitioners to explore their projects, identify what we think is possible, what we think is challenging, and this is no different.
Great, thank you. Can you give us an update on the postcards?
Yeah, yeah. So we 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 didn't send, we're not sending postcards out, and we didn't send postcards out to all property owners. This is a text amendment. It's not a rezoning. So we're following the procedures that we did. I did in response to the conversation that we had at the Planning Commission, I did take additional steps. Both you'll recall in advance of the work session, in advance of the first public hearing and of this public hearing. Since the particularly the last public hearing, we did put together that ADU fact sheet as a means of trying to provide a very concise way to communicate proposed changes. We sent that out with our communications department through all the city's social media. We issued press releases. We sent it out through the God delivery channels. So we did a much more robust outreach on this than we would typically do for a UDC text amendment. But we did not, we did not send it to all the property owners, as is that's not our typical process. And I frankly don't have the resources to just do that for all of our textbooks.
That's fair. And I will say I saw this all over the place this week on all of my social media. I I understand that there are some concerns from people that this impacts significant number of people. They don't know, ninety-nine percent of people might not be aware. I might want to participate in this process. I am wondering, I don't know if city council has a budget for this. I don't know, Commissioner Dish, if this could be something that you explore that way. I just want to make sure I I feel I feel comfortable. The basis has been covered. I just, I know that this keeps coming up. This has come up a lot. In terms of like making homeowners aware that this is something that could that both their neighbor could be building, but that, you know, they also like might now have the opportunity to build in their backyard. Thank you for that update.
I would just I just add, not to respond on behalf of Commissioner Dish, but just the the normal structure of ordinances going to city council. You know, I'm, we addressed, we we addressed this conversation and decision in the staff report. I will make sure that that is conveyed forward as it goes to city council, that this dialogue happened. The nature of the city council consideration is they have a first reading. And then that, so they have a consideration of this proposed ordinance prior to second reading and the scheduling of the public hearing. So I would just say that this tension, I guess, I I'll acknowledge will be will be daylighted in in the materials that goes to city council, and city council will be aware of that. Giving them the ability to follow the typical procedures in course that we do for UDC ordinances, or if they want to have a discussion about something.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Dish, thank you for what you said about the ADUs Part Two. I love that you're exploring that. I also, one of the callers mentioned, I thought this idea was intriguing. I don't think this is our purview. But if there are some sort of like loan programs that help enable people that want to build them to build them. I think, you know, if there were partners that we could bring into that conversation, you know, to to help homeowners that might not have the right financing mechanisms. You know, maybe that could be part of that exploration as well. I am not making a motion, but I would also be carry, I would also be in favor of increasing the setbacks. Five feet feels a little bit more comfortable to me. But other than that, I am also in support of this as is. You know, I I I know that there's been a lot of concerns, particularly about the owner occupancy requirement. I mean, I think the fact is, you know, I've been trying to push this through, and is this the right thing to do? There are a lot of crises that we're facing simultaneously right now, and and something has to change. Like, we cannot keep building and developing and planning our cities the way that we've been doing it. We have a housing crisis. Not only in Ann Arbor, but across the country. We have a climate crisis. We have to be better about promoting non-motorized transit, reducing VMT, making sure that people can walk and bike to their daily needs and make sure that people can live more affordably, closer to their jobs. We have a public health crisis, both in terms of we have chronic disease rates increasing due to how our cities are designed. And of course, we have concurrently this infectious disease crisis. There are a lot, there are a lot of arguments for changing the ways that our cities are designed and developed in order to just overall improve public health and overall improve the climate. So bottom line, I am very supportive to these changes that might feel aggressive across the board. I don't, you know, nobody's going to, not everybody's going to be comfortable with these things, but we have to look at the bigger picture. ADUs are not going to solve our our affordable housing crisis, but it's a piece of the solution. There's no silver bullet. Are there other things that we should be looking at and changing to increase the overall housing stock at various price points? Yes, and we should look at those next. I think that, you know, expanding neighborhoods that allow duplexes, I think is a great thing to look at. This doesn't have to be either or. So I think that passing this as is and reducing and relaxing the restrictions to see what else we can get in this community, we can't stay stagnant. I think that is all I have for now.
Commissioner Abrams.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to maybe second those comments from Commissioner Hammerschmidt. I think that those are really important points. And so thank you for making them. And also Commissioner Dish, I'll be thinking about ways that that the city can can help people finance and actually achieve the desire to build an ADU. I wanted, I guess, since we only have this on our agenda this evening, we have a little bit of time. And so I I wanted to take a little a little bit of time to address some of the communications and comments that were made during the public hearing. I think we heard a number of times questions around the motivation of this body to revise the ordinance. And I wanted to say a couple of things in response to that. So one is that I don't, in my opinion, what we're doing right now is not establishing a mandate for ADUs in Ann Arbor. That happened in two thousand sixteen, when the city changed the ordinance to allow them. What I see our role right now as being is basically fulfilling that desire, which was expressed in two thousand sixteen by removing obstacles. It's clear that the ordinance, as it's currently written, is not allowing for ADUs to be built in Ann Arbor. And if that is the goal, which according to the ordinance it is, you know, or according to the to the voting of the bodies, this body and the city council in two thousand sixteen, then I think one of the things that we are interested in doing is making that goal a reality. And so we, I think, have spent a lot of time talking about what those various obstacles are. And some of them are financial. And I don't know that, you know, we're going to solve that this evening. But a lot of them are about the way in which the ordinance restricts the the construction of certain kinds of ADUs on certain kinds of lots. And I support our work towards removing those obstacles. As as far as I understand it, this process has not been more rushed or rammed through or circumventing the process by which all ordinance revisions go through, which is to say that it's been discussed in ordinance revisions committee working session and has had public hearings. And the kind of standard notification, I mean, I think Mr. Leonard is describing actually increased notification and and publicity around this ordinance change. And so well, actually, I'll pause here with a question. Maybe, Mr. Leonard, was there a postcard sent out in two thousand sixteen? No. So I mean, in my mind, that feels like a much more radical. That was the radical move. This is not that radical compared to that. And I think Mr. Chang provided evidence. You know, data, I should say, sorry, kind of revealing the number of lots that would now be eligible by zoning according to these changes. And it's the minority. So the other thing that I that I heard in the comments and the communications we received via email, but also from the callers is questions about the why, like, or what is the goal? And maybe questions around like, maybe being unclear about why, if the goal is to increase the construction of ADUs in Ann Arbor, why that's a laudable goal, why that's something. And I want to actually just, if you'll bear with me, read here from the AARP ADU model ordinance, because I think they do a really good job, better than I would be able to, off the cuff, articulating the benefits of ADUs. And I think these really apply to our community. So one, they increase the supply of more affordable type of housing that does not require government subsidy. So we've talked a little bit about the fact that they may be market rate rentals. They may not be rentals for people who are at forty percent or sixty percent or even eighty percent AMI. But as Commissioner Clark was describing, the kind of way in which affordable housing, with the way in which housing becomes more affordable in a community, it doesn't mean that these units themselves have to be affordable units. Increasing the supply of units in general, these will will bring rates down or at least slow their rise. Two, they say ADUs will help older homeowners, single parents, young home buyers and renters seek seeking a wider range of homes, prices, rents and locations. So we've also talked about just providing more possible places to live in these neighborhoods. Rental units where there weren't rental units, smaller units where there weren't smaller units. And in particular here, I want to think for a minute about the older homeowner, because there was a caller who said that only rich people can build ADUs. I think actually, right now, the easiest way to finance an ADU is through equity in your home. And the people most likely to have equity in their home are older homeowners. So it doesn't, wealth doesn't mean that you're cash rich. It might mean that you actually have an asset that you can now use to be able to age in place, have rental income and and capitalize on the asset that you have, you know, built up over your lifetime. Three, increase housing diversity and supply, provide opportunities to reduce the segregation of people by race, ethnicity and income that resulted from decades of exclusionary zoning. And I want to underline that one. I think that's really important. Provide homeowners with extra income to meet rising homeownership costs. Create a convenient living arrangement that allows family members or other persons to provide care and support for someone in a semi-independent living situation without the latter leaving his or her community. So this is extended family, also aging in place. And I think from a different report that we received by the Urban Land Institute, they cited that forty-six forty-six percent of the ADUs that they studied are rented by someone with an arms-length relationship to the homeowner. So we're really talking about a large number of these being friends and family. Six, provide an opportunity for increased security, home care and companionship for older and other homeowners, so neighbors who are looking out for neighbors. Seven, reducing burdens on taxpayers while enhancing local property tax base by providing a cost-effective means of accommodating development without the cost of building, operating and maintaining of infrastructure. I mean, I think that's really important from a kind of civic standpoint, when we're talking about increasing density. You know, in this kind of acupunctural way, we're working this density into these neighborhoods that already have this infrastructure sustained. Eight, promoting more compact urban and suburban growth. So this is what Commissioner Hammerschmidt was just describing about new patterns of the built environment that we just need to adopt in order to combat other crises like climate change. And nine, enhancing job opportunities for individuals by providing housing nearer to employment centers and public transportation. And that's also something that Commissioner Hammerschmidt commented on. So I just want to be clear that I think those goals are very, very important. And I think that they overlap with the general goals of our community right now in terms of sustainability, affordability and and trying to, and anti-racist work, let's say, to be have a more inclusive community. And so for me, this is just one part. It's not the whole picture, but it's a really important part of meeting those goals. And yes, I think it's a multi-prong, you know, it's a multi-prong approach. It's not an either or. So I don't think that this comes at the expense of other approaches to trying, other approaches to bringing more affordable housing into the community. And I think as a body, we expressed, I think, a shared commitment to that. And then maybe the last thing I wanted to touch on is just, and I and I said this at the last the last time we met and talked about this, but in my mind, the owner occupancy requirement really does put it basically produces a hierarchy or or kind of class of of housing that is lower than other forms of housing. It says that owner occupied housing is somehow more valuable or better than rent or occupied housing. Or it says that primary homes are better than ADUs. And I think that if what we're doing is agreeing that ADUs are kind of equal and important type of housing, then they shouldn't be regulated differently than the single-family home. And so if there's not an owner occupancy requirement for a home, which I think Commissioner Dish called out that I can buy a home and rent it, right, then I think that the same kind of rules should apply to ADUs. And so for those reasons, I'm in support of the revisions that are before us tonight. And I also would would support an amendment to increase the three-foot step back to five feet. Thanks.
Commissioner Milstein.
Thank you. So I am, I concur with the comments I've heard so far. I am supportive of this. of these amendments. Something that I've heard and something that we've seen in our communication from concerned residents is that this allows for investors to buy up properties and build, you know, second units pretty much on their property. So I did some math, and I talked to one contractor. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to reach out to more than one. But the reality is, the amount of money that's required to build a, for example, a garage with a unit up above is pretty significant. We're talking about, you know, $200,000 to $300,000 is the ballpark that I received, depending on how nice that is. And the square footage that it adds, in regards to square footage of the unit, especially if it's over a garage, isn't all that great. Let's just say it's 450 to 650 square feet. In one-bedroom unit, you know, looking at the amount of money that you are able to get and rent on a monthly basis, and then ultimately on a yearly basis. The numbers that I ran is the numbers I usually look at with, when I'm working with investor clients. And what we usually look at is gross rent multipliers. So the sale price of the property divided by the yearly gross rents equals a gross rent multiplier rate. That rate for most investment properties in the Ann Arbor area is right around, you know, let's just say 11 to 12 times the yearly rent. When I did the numbers based on how much it would cost to build an ADU and how much rent it's receiving, the numbers were anywhere from 14, 15 to 16 times gross to rent. So the idea that an investor is going to come in, buy a property and invest that much more to not make all that much money, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Ultimately, they can take the additional money and buy additional property, if that's what, if they are truly in the business of trying to make an income from investment properties. So that argument doesn't quite fly with me, that all of a sudden investors are going to buy up properties and build ADUs and rent them out. So that's just one item that I wanted to point out. Overall, I am supportive of these amendments. And further, I would also be supportive over increasing the setback to five feet. So when the time comes, I'm happy to make that motion or support that motion. Thank you.
Like someone else said earlier, maybe it was Commissioner Dish, I really like that the chair often goes towards the end, because you have all said the things that were on my list much more eloquently. I want to highlight a couple of things, and this is not intended to be corrections to things earlier, but just to highlight, to put it in context a little bit, a couple of times, it was talked about as, you know, Commissioner Dish thinking about ADU 2.0, right? And there's a couple of things that I think came up or that have been in discussion before that's helpful. This is ADU 2.0. Like, this is not ADU 1.0, right? And that's something that I think Commissioner Abrams really pointed out, like, the big decision that opened up ADUs in a bigger way in the single-family districts happened in 2016. So when I think about what the biggest changes are to the ordinance before us today, in terms of those districts, like, it's actually adding it to the multifamily districts, which was talked about then. That's not a common, a big concern that we've heard here, right? So I don't think that that's a huge drastic change. And again, kind of pointing to Commissioner or to Mr. Chang's numbers, like, there's not tons of single-family residences in those multi-unit districts anyway, or the multifamily districts. So I don't think that that's a big change. Parking actually is not a big change, because we're not like, because the caveat that you had to be within a quarter mile of a bus stop, if you were within a quarter mile of a bus stop, you didn't have to provide off-street parking, like, there's not very many properties, as Mr. Chang said, that are not within a quarter mile of a bus stop. So that is really not a big change. It's showing up on the table as a change. But that's really not a big change. The setbacks actually are not a big change. We allowed before garages or other existing structures that were in existence at the time, but there was actually a window where people could build a garage quickly. They could build a new accessory structure and allow it to, you know, and have it be feasible for an ADU that was three feet off the property line. So that's actually not the biggest change. The lot size, in my mind, is not a huge change, just because it applies to very few properties. And there's other things, the lot coverage requirement, like the limitation on how much of your rear setback can be covered accommodates for that fact. So in my mind, the biggest change is to the owner occupancy. That's the biggest, the biggest change. But I think the points that Commissioner Dish and Commissioner Milstein made about whether that actually makes, like, whether that is a big deal. Also Commissioner Abrams and Commissioner Hammerschmidt, I mean, like, as some of you were talking, I just like noted down your names, like, I'm, I, that was the thing that, those who are on ORC know, like, that was where I was on the fence. And I feel much more comfortable with that now, because I think that the role of investors in our community, like, this is not changing that at all. And so I don't see this as a drastic change. And for that matter, like, this is, this is the evolution of our policies and the things that we're supposed to do. Honestly, back in 2016, where this is coming from is back in 2016, we said, let's do this, and let's revisit it in a couple of years to see if it's working. Like, we did that, we attempted to do that in the interim. And this body thought that, like, there were changes that could be made, and that council didn't think it at that time. Like, we're revisiting it. Like, we said in 2016, we would do that. So I really don't see this as a drastic change, and any of these things as, you know, hugely changing the implications of a lot of people. You know, what could happen in their neighborhoods. So to that extent, like, I am supportive of this. I'm actually, I, given, I would not be, I'm fine passing this without the changes to the setback distance. I think that that complicates things for those that actually may have been built in the interim that are there. And like, I just don't think it's necessary. In 2016, we said that if you had a garage that was three feet further than the property line, or you could build one in the next six months, like, you could have an ADU in it, if you were in those couple of districts. And I just don't, so that that was, you know, okay back then, and I'm not sure that we need to revisit that now. From our discussion, some of the things that I, you know, the couple of things that I noted and as other commissioners brought this up, is about planning staff, and not so much for enforcement, but the demands on planning staff for explaining. And so Commissioner Dish, like, one of the things is making it easier, right? Like, thank you, staff, for putting together the FAQs, but, you know, templates about what this could look like and how it could be realized. It's not necessarily planning staff, but that's going to take some of the work off their plate. It's not necessarily for you to do, maybe. But I think that could take some of the work off your plate. But a bigger thing, too, what gets brought up a lot is the master plan. And I, there are elements of the master plan that I think we should revisit. I don't think that this one is one that necessarily needs to be revisited. The idea of ADUs within the master plan is actually some of the newer elements. We have older elements of the master plan that I would love to revisit if there were staff and budget for that. But we've talked about that a couple of times, and like, we're moving on. This is implementing past things that haven't made it all the way through in my mind. So I'm supportive of this ordinance revision as is. And really want to thank all of the commissioners' thoughtful discussion about it, folks calling in to, you know, with concerns, or also with support for this, has helped me kind of clarify, like, where there are differences. And honestly, that table that you put together, Mr. Chang and Mr. Leonard, really helped, you know, where, how there are differences. I think that that was really helpful for me, so I appreciate that. Other, Commissioner Abrams, and then Commissioner Dish?
I just wanted to make one more comment about the setback. I think you're probably right, Commissioner Mills. And one maybe detail to note is that in order to build three feet from the setback, you have to construct with fire-rated walls because of life safety code. And I feel that most people would probably prefer to just move the building to the five-foot limit. I'm not, it's hard for me to imagine a scenario where the desire to be, to have those extra two feet would cause you to pay the extra cost of the fire-rated construction. So it feels, it feels like a small detail, I think, at this point. Thanks.
Commissioner Dish?
I had one thought about parking. And I'm hoping that you all just laugh in my face. But the previous ordinance had a requirement about parking that was moot, because every, basically every place in Ann Arbor is within a quarter of a mile of a bus stop. But it did have a requirement about parking, so that if in some future time, people have come to decide that they want to not have ADUs built, and they decide, I know, we're going to slap a really restrictive parking requirement, so that they can't be built. If we've taken out our parking requirement, then they just get to put it in. They get to say, this ordinance didn't even think about parking. How dumb. We're going to require X number of spaces, and now no ADUs will be built. If we leave the parking requirement that is moot, because it's met, in, then it's obvious that it's a stricter parking requirement being imposed. So it's clear to everyone what's happening. I realize that I am playing chess and exhibiting paranoia, but I was doing some reading about how places have legalized and then made unbuildable ADUs, and that was one way in which they do it. And so I don't really think, I don't really think that we need to bring the parking requirement back in, but I'm just thinking about how, by leaving it silent, it isn't, it wouldn't be obvious that someone was using that tactic, that sort of bait and switch tactic, to say, of course, ADUs are legal, but unfortunately, no one seems to be able to provide the parking. You can all laugh now.
Not laughing. I'm going to the text to see, is, are we really silent on parking entirely? And I would pose that to staff about.
Yeah, so I guess I want to go back to a couple of, sort of, the question that Commissioner Sauvay asked, perhaps at the, sort of, after the public hearing. The accessory dwelling unit is just that. It's defined as an accessory to a single-family dwell. We are not providing any occupancy capacity that isn't already provided at the property. So to, from that lens, I think that perhaps we were already going down a road of actually requiring more parking for the same capacity that the comparably situated same parcel would be without an ADU. Same, same maximum occupancy, but we were, we were, the code as currently written today states that if you're redistributing the same people in that same property, you have to provide more parking. And I guess I would say that that seems, my premise is that's a direction that the planning commission has routinely been sort of pushing against recently, that we, in fact, should not be pushing for more parking. And this, you know, right now, this ordinance says that if, you know, to an extreme example, four unrelated people can live in this house with the parking it's provided. If the same four people live in the house with two of them in an ADU and two in the main house, then you need to provide more parking. That, I guess, at its core, that seems inconsistent with a lot of the discussions that I've heard at the planning commission. I appreciate Commissioner Dish's sort of thoughts, that I don't think it has a lot of applicability, but to leave it in would be maintaining that statement that the commission and the city think that it is important to add parking in that circumstance.
And this came up at ORC. And that was some of the discussion in the kind of, before we saw it the last time around, two weeks ago, that was our discussion, which was, we're rethinking parking generally. And there are lots, we have tomes of master planning documents that support the idea of reducing the requirements. And, yeah, on my list on the parking, I had Commissioner Sauvay's name written down, because you said it better than.
I would also end with the parking. You know, the principal structure is required to have one parking space, you know, per our code for single-family. And we don't count any type of stacked parking. So you may have more parking, you may show that you only have the minimum one parking space, but if you have a two-car garage, you realistically have four spaces you'll park behind. So you have more than the one minimum that's required, but we're not counting those stacked spaces either.
So maybe I should, now, I didn't, I was not clear on this, so this is excellent to know, that in fact, we need to remove this, because we were we were setting a higher bar. Would it make sense to state in an affirmative way that we're not going to regulate these in a way that increases parking minimums? I mean, I don't know, can you tie future decision-makers that way?
Well, the, you know, by striking it, we are not, by striking it, it has the impact of that we are still regulating parking by a single-family dwelling unit, or the same standard would apply to a single-family dwelling unit and its accessory dwell. Likewise, an accessory, a single-family dwelling unit that has a home occupation, same parking requirement. So we have, we would be, by striking it, we would be relying on that one space per home is our expectation. And we provide a lot of opportunity and flexibility to, as to how that single-family home can be used through accessory uses and the like, without us saying, if you do that, you have to provide more parking. So you could, you could restate that in the ADU section, but I don't think it's necessary to do it. It happens by just not add, by just eliminating this additional parking requirement. But, you know, I appreciate the thought. I just want to emphasize, as it is, this doesn't come into play very often. But it is saying that we want more parking in these circumstances.
In the parking section, because that's not before us, for single-family homes, does it say, single-family home and its accessory structures and uses, including ADUs? I just want to make, because I think to Commissioner Dish's point, like, being explicit might clarify things if people are, you know, if, to a potential ADU builder, like, it is an affirmative, like, nope, you don't have to build extra parking. But I also just want to follow up on that. It was sort of, maybe it wasn't posed as a question, but I am going to pose it as a question. Zoning is a living document, and that it, whether we strike this, I mean, somebody could, or put in that language, affirming that there's no parking required, a future body based on an unexpected perverse impact of this ordinance could change it. We hope they do, right? Like, if it's not working, like, it's supposed to be living. It's not written in stone. But also, if there is a policy, overall policy change, like, that, you know, then, then, or direction for the city, right? Like, then, we, they're not beholden to this necessarily. I appreciate, like, thinking about how it could be changed, but I also want to just make clear, like, zoning is living, like, we should be revising, we're like revisiting it to make sure that it is getting us achieving the goals that we have articulated through our planning documents. So, or if it's not tweaking it to make it better, do that.
And to your, to your question, the parking standard is just single-family dwelling. It doesn't- It doesn't say single family dwelling and accessory uses, nor is that language applied to any of our uses. It is based on the primary. So again, a single family dwelling is, a single family dwelling with an accessory dwelling unit is a single family dwelling. A single family dwelling without it is a single family dwelling. Single family dwelling with a home occupation is a single family dwelling.
Okay. Of the two potential amendments that we, that have been floated, I would be more in favor of an amendment that affirms that no additional parking is required. But I don't feel super strongly that that has to be in this. The two amendments, sorry, to be clear, were about whether people want to change setbacks, which I'm, there were a lot of people who said they might, but then maybe there were some arguments against it. And then the, um, this is like affirming that no additional parking is required. Mr. Leonard.
One more, one more thought. The UDC is our code. So whether something is in the code, the, the standard is established in the code. As we were talking about ADU 3.0 or 2.0, whatever your terminology is, we have a lot of opportunity to just communicate those standards and affirm that no parking is required as part of that. The UDC in fact, probably isn't the best way to just broadly communicate expectations, it sets expectations. So, so I just want to say it doesn't have to be an either or. If we, if that is not affirmed in the UDC, it doesn't mean that we can't look for those ways that we inform the public about the standards and expectations for developing ADU, those that are derived from the UDC. And whether it's the application process, information, fact sheets, dialogue, we can convey that even whether, whether it's explicit in the language that, or it's just a result of the requirements. Does that make sense?
Commissioner Sauvay.
I have a, I have a clarifying question about the area lot coverage and setbacks. Because I think a lot of this comes in that one of the changes is about minimum lot size and that we've removed that. But we have the area lot coverage. When we're calculating the area lot coverage, is that within the bounding box of a three foot or five foot setback? Or is that all the way to the property line and when we're talking about that percentage?
We, we take it through the whole rear, not including the setbacks.
So then if.
Chris, do you want to pull up that graphic and maybe we can just clarify that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that might help. Because I guess what, what I, what I'm asking is, does it help with exceptionally small lots to be able to scooch it into the setback to make building it feasible in which they might, you know, spend more money doing fireproofing? Or are they still restricted by enough things that the in versus out is not supported by that footprint? Does that make sense? The kind of trade offs of looking at between those two tend to be national standards.
If I understand, you were asking if you were excluding the setbacks, this would be your rear yard. And then we would take 35, you know, approximately a third of it is what you could use as far as your detached accessory dwelling unit.
And that's all within that rear yard setback, all the way to the property line. So that five feet is, we're talking about the side yard in any case. Or sitting in the rear, the side of the rear yard is one, one other way to look at it.
Now, just not to confuse it a whole lot, I have seen as people who submitted for garages, this is, this is tech, this is your rear yard, no more than 35% of it. If this were a deeper lot and they happen to build the accessory dwelling unit and use some of the, the area that's in the white here that's principal, we don't count that. So they could make it more than 35%, but it wouldn't be more of the 35% of the rear yard. They could take up some of this, if this happened to be a little deeper lot, they could take up more area. And it would, we wouldn't count that against the 35%.
Yeah. The five, a three or five foot setback doesn't change the lot coverage. It's just where, it would just restrict where in that rectangle you could locate it.
Yep. Okay. Um, yeah, those are kind of the things that I just want to like clarify as we talk about it as an open ended thing. Like, does it really make much change in one way or the other? You know, I think some of the public comment is the concern of it right against the edge is two feet, a big difference. And, and what, how I'm reviewing it, I understand the kind of inconsistency of like 1.0 and 2.0, we change it from three to five feet. The alternative is, you know, if there's some concern squeezing it back in, feasibility wise is what I want to, want to understand. Does it make it harder on smaller lots to make an ADU feasible if we tighten it? But it seems like a tight enough margin that there's room to kind of make it work. Because you're not like overlapping that side yard and the rear yard and the area. It's kind of a Venn diagram of no build or like compounding usable area. So I don't know kind of exactly where I'm going with this, but just kind of laying out all the variables for everybody. That, you know, I, I'm open to the discussion. I'm, I'm really not kind of convinced either way. I'm just kind of, if anybody wants to convince me either way, I think there's kind of opinions on both sides that I can support. Right.
We're happy to explore any of these requirements or changes. But one thing I guess I just want to point out from a, from a affordability or sustainability lens, one of the provisions, I just want to make sure it's clear that we understand where we're starting from. The current ordinance says that if you had a detached accessory structure by the end of 2016, you are generally eligible for a detached accessory dwelling unit. If you didn't, you're not. For those that are eligible, you could install one in your existing detached accessory dwelling, dwelling unit. So long as it met our current requirements, which is three feet from the side property line and three feet from the rear property line. And 35% lot coverage, it has to meet the height, et cetera. You could, if you were qualifying, you could alter that accessory building. If it wasn't compliant, make it compliant to meet that. If it was only one foot off the property line, you could modify it, make it three feet off the property line and realize an accessory dwelling. You could likewise demolish it and build a totally new detached accessory dwelling unit compliant with the three feet. So I, so I just want to add that if we do explore some change to a five feet setback, you're probably going to be putting more, it's, it's not going to matter obviously so much, I think, from a viability for those that aren't eligible now and would become eligible. It might have some impact for those that have existing structures from an affordability, sustainability desire to try to reutilize those. But again, I don't, I don't have all the data to tell you how many there are that are three feet off the property line and how many are less or more. So I just want to, that's, that's something in my mind about that standard. I think that there's probably, I would, I think there's more properties that are not eligible for a detached now than are. So it, you're, it's, it's kind of a more narrow application, I think. But that, that I just want to be clear, that would, that would definitely eliminate some existing accessory structures from being able to be converted into.
That's helpful. Because then it's like a renovation of that three foot wall for fire rating instead of a complete reconstruction of the building to the five feet. So I mean, I, I think leaving it as is, and again, it's living. We could update these things and kind of see what happens. It has been there and we're not modifying it in any condition yet. Seems like a good way to go then.
Any other discussion before we ask for a roll call vote? All right, Mr. Leonard, I think we are ready to vote on the proposed ordinance amendments.
As presented.
As presented, no, as presented.
Commissioner Abrams.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Clark. Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Milstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauvay.
Yes.
It carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thanks again for staff putting this together. Thanks also to everyone who for postponing this so that we can have the discussion at a not so late hour. I think it was helped by that and some additional time to, you know, for staff to pull things together. So thank you. Number, item number 10 on our agenda is regular business and there is none. So we're going to skip over that to item 11, which is public comment. This is the final opportunity for persons to speak for up to three minutes about any item of interest. Public comment can be made by calling 877-853-5247 and then entering meeting ID 990-9896-8122. City staff will select callers that have raised their hands. You do that by pressing star nine on your phone. You'll get the automated message that you're, the host is allowing you to speak. And Mr. Leonard will call you or you're the last three digits of your telephone number. Please do mute any background sounds so that we can hear you clearly and do state your name and address at the beginning of your comments, please.
Caller with a phone number ending with 534, caller with a phone number ending with 534. Can I mute your phone and address the commission?
Hi, this is Tom Stalberg. I want to thank Commissioner Sauvay for catching an error that I made. I tossed that on at the end about the duplexes without really thinking it through. So thank you for catching that. The duplex issue, I don't want that to be the tail wagging the dog anyhow on all this. You've made your decision. It's done. There are some things that I would disagree, but there's no point in arguing about it right now. One thing that I really do think is important to mention, I do feel that these are significant changes. The average person sees the tip of the iceberg of this. And maybe there only was the tip of the iceberg in 2016. Well, now we've made that 90% of the iceberg under the water real rather than hypothetical. And the average person is not aware of that. This is not what the average person thinks an ADU is. Technically, these are accessory dwelling units and we can call this an ordinance revision for all the technical reasons and go to the technical notices that are required for an ordinance revision and refer to that. In the end, what do we really want as a community? We want for the citizens to be well informed, to understand what these changes mean and to be able to weigh in with their opinions. And if then the citizens want this, that's great. They've bought into this because they understand it. I'm convinced that the vast majority of citizens have no clue the extent of these changes, which are very significant changes. I don't want to downplay them and I don't think anybody should downplay it. And if the citizens are told and understand that this is not what they thought of an ADU being, this is something different, this is something much more significant, more impactful. And if the citizens want it, then great. I think it's wrong to not notify the citizens because these are such stressful changes. These are so far from what people understand an ADU to be. And I don't understand why we wouldn't notify them and educate them. We're all here, I'm sorry, you're all here doing work for the city.
Thirty more seconds.
The city is all of us, the city is the citizens. They have a right to know and to understand these changes. So it's up to council now to decide, how are we going to notify the citizens and educate them? So that they can tell us what they really think about these changes. Because they don't know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending with 556. Caller with phone number ending with 556. You have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hi, this is Ralph McKee again. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
I, I guess I'd want to start with just being disappointed about several items. And I imagine you're pretty sick of hearing you talk about these items. But I feel kind of compelled after listening to a whole bunch of these meetings and writing and, and talking at these meetings several times. I am a little bit amazed at the, at the just the, the result. I, I wonder why we have public engagement, to be frank. On, on every issue that I can think of, the every, pretty much every commenter, and I shouldn't say every, but the vast majority of commenters wanted more notice. He said, no. Many commenters talked about the setbacks. You did actually discuss that and decided, no, we don't, we don't want to change that. The vast majority, 25 to nine by my count, wanted to retain the owner occupancy requirement. Nope, not doing that. There are lots of good arguments made by commenters. And many of them didn't even get addressed. And if you're going to make decisions that pretty much go against all the public input that you get, why are we wasting our time? And I, I would suspect that that would have increased the severity of the number. If you had notified more people, you would have got an even higher percentage of people opposing numerous things. And, and that doesn't really bother me as much as the, sort of the lack of, of some of the arguments. And I obviously can't go through all of your arguments in three minutes. You just spent an hour doing that. But I'd like to address maybe one, which is if you're going to take one data point of Vancouver without getting into any detail, like maybe those units were affordable because they were built a long time ago when the, when the, when the building costs were lower. And then to be fair, Commissioner Milstein, he, you know, actually did some homework rather than just spouting talking points. And, and I'll, I respect that. But none of you seem to notice that his argument totally destroyed one of your other arguments, which was that older owners will go out and take a loan on a home equity loan to build one of these things.
Thirty more seconds.
Hey, guess what? If the rent isn't going to pay for it, you're going to get foreclosed out of your house. Think about the inconsistency of those two positions. They're totally intellectually dishonest if you look at them both. But you accept them both. Hey, you really need to apply some better critical thinking skills here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending with 764. Caller with the phone number ending with 764. You can unmute your phone and address the planning commission.
You can press star six to unmute your phone.
Caller with phone number ending with 764. You can press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission. Go ahead. Caller ending with 764, are you there?
And our end, you're appearing to be unmuted.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Hi. Arguing that investors are key to increasing ADUs and then arguing that investors won't make much, won't make much impact just looks silly. Companies like Oxford Properties already manage portfolios of individual rental houses.
Could you provide your name, please, at the beginning of your comment and then go ahead and start?
I'll start older. I'm John Floyd. Arguing that investors are key to increasing ADUs and then arguing that investors won't make much input, much, much difference looks a little bit silly. Companies like Oxford Properties already manage large portfolios of rental properties in Ann Arbor. Arguing that those don't exist when they already do looks silly. The friends and family argument about who lives in ADUs assumes those are owner occupied. If they're investor occupied, those aren't friends and family. Vancouver is a large city in a large metro area, landlocked in between the ocean and mountains. Vancouver is a large city, uh, and a large metro area landlocked in between the ocean and mountains. You may not have noticed, but Ann Arbor is a small community in the middle of a prairie. The distance between City Hall of Ypsilanti and City Hall of Ann Arbor would not get you very far across Vancouver, much less very far across Detroit. A crisis is an imminent bad event or the fallout from a bad event. Eviction is a housing crisis. I wish I lived in a different zip code is not a housing crisis. Misusing language does not improve credibility of government. Uh, if it walks like a zoning change and it talks like a zoning change, it's not a duck, it's a zoning change. If you want to stay with your story, it feels good, you stick to it and hats off to you for finding a way to walk around law. Just because your social set lives online does not mean that the community, that everyone in it lives online. And the idea that, well, we put a whole bunch of social media posts out that that addresses the issue of, uh, homeowners is not realistic. Uh, I appreciate you working on the committee. It's volunteer, I know it's a pain in the butt and, uh, from people like me calling in, but I think that there's a lot of process problem and a lot of bad, um, attempts at logic and false analogies that doesn't enhance your credibility. Uh, thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with three two six, caller with the phone number ending with three two six.
Yes. Hi, Jeff Crockett, five oh six East Kingsley. I appreciate the brief conversation on enforcement, but it really missed my point. Um, there is a process, an easy process in place to identify problems with your trash. There's an A two fix it system where you can go and report it. There's a response, the response gets plotted. But as far as I can tell, the process involved in reporting problems or what will be reporting problems in regards to AD, ADU, uh, projects is much less transparent. Uh, and to my knowledge, when I've reported things in, in, in signage, I did not get any kind of case number. It was connecting to an individual person. So what I'm requesting is that Mr. Leonard develops a step-by-step procedure for what is going to be ADU enforcement. It, it's just the least that could be done so that the person who encounters suddenly a problem in their backyard knows what to do. Uh, right now, if you go to the planning website, you send an email and that's it without any guidance. And that simply is not transparent and we deserve more. I don't understand why you couldn't simply expand that system involved in zoning enforcement to A two fix it. Uh, it's a, it's a good system. The other advantage, as I said before, that is not what you get when you look on E track it is you can't see a plot of all the different violations as you can on A two fix it. So I think that's what true transparency is. And requiring people to look up an E track it about a specific complaint, it's very difficult. So I encourage, uh, Mr. Leonard to develop a set of guidelines specific to the reporting of potential ADU violations to ma- and to make it a lot more transparent. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Banister, you have three minutes to address the planning commission.
Hello, uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, yes, this is Anne Banister, a former council member from Ward one. And I want to thank you all for your service, but I do want to echo, um, some of the concerns from all of the residents who've been calling in. Um, I serve on the, uh, natural features subcommittee under, uh, Chair Christopher Graham. And we are working hard on tree protection ordinances for Ann Arbor's landmark and heritage canopy, a tree canopy. And this, um, ordinance which you all are bringing forth, uh, makes no mention or protection for these natural features. And so I feel strongly that that's a, a violation of our best interests, uh, when it comes to A two zero. And, and, and so I'm very sorry to see that and unintended, uh, consequences with drainage. And so I think we, solutions to what you're trying to do are much more to build on brownfields and areas that are already covered in asphalt and concrete, um, such as some of the transit areas down by Sears and, and we've got plenty of good places to incentivize building rather than in these established neighborhoods with our dwindling remaining tree canopy and natural features. It's just, it's so contrary to, to, to values about, uh, the climate crisis. And, um, lastly, I am concerned about the lack of public notice. Um, there was mentioned that there was some, that the fact sheet was put out on a press release. I monitor those things and I definitely did not see the press release that, that was referenced. Um, and I, I agree with the other callers that, uh, ninety-nine percent of the people are, are not familiar with what you ideology is being laid down upon us. So, um, I hope that at the council level, Councilwoman Louise will, will bring forth a resolution to at least send a postcard to these twenty thousand properties. And I hope that, uh, the trees and the natural features advocates will come forth as this process moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller with the phone number ending with zero five nine, caller with the phone number ending with zero five nine. Can unmute your phone and address the planning commission? Go ahead.
Hello?
You might need to mute the TV behind you. We're just getting some feedback. Caller with the phone number ending in zero five nine, if you could turn off the volume behind you.
Yeah, okay, I just did, yeah.
Great.
All right, so, um, this is Cynthia Price, twenty-eight hundred page avenue. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for passing these changes to the ADU ordinance, which I think bring Ann Arbor better in line with what the future holds. And I completely agree with Chair Mills that if there are difficulties with some portion of it, you know, since these are to one degree or another, um, new ideas and possibly unprecedented, that nothing prevents revising it again, um, to address the problems that have arisen. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much.
Caller with phone number ending with eight two eight, caller with the phone number ending with eight two eight. You can unmute your phone using star six and address the planning commission.
Hello?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Um, my name's Kathy Strachan. I live on Orkney in Ward one. And I just have one comment. I'll be very interested to see how many ADUs come after this change because I believe that the increase in a person's taxes are going to be the dominant reason why it's not done. Because if you build this structure, you're going to be uncapped from the headly. And depending on how long you've lived in your home, you may see your taxes go up fifty, seventy-five, possibly a hundred percent. And, um, I know the, the taxes in this city are incredibly high. And, you know, I've lived in my home for thirty years. There is no way I would do that and have my taxes jump to, um, you know, whatever the DSS value is. I mean, forget it. I would never do that. I would never put in addition or change, make any change to my house at this point. I've been, you know, having lived here for thirty years, I couldn't afford those kind of taxes. And so I'm going to be very interested to see how many ADUs you get put in because of the impact it will have on, um, uncapping the taxes. So I think that's a really strong consideration that hopefully people who are thinking about doing this are notified that, that is going to happen and they realize what their yearly taxes are going to jump to. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending with one eight zero, caller with the phone number ending with one eight zero. Go ahead.
All right, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, great, thanks. Uh, my name is Brandon Dimchas. I'm in the fourth ward. Um, and, uh, to address a few things that other callers have said. I am a local resident and I like these ADU changes. They're what I'm looking for. I don't feel like I'm being tricked for rules or bamboozled in any way. Um, uh, also I think the amount of input is often vaccinated by people who are mad about something changing and less by people who are excited about the change or, or, you know, don't mind it happening, right? So like, uh, you know, I, in my experience of listening to council meetings and, and, and other things, it's generally people who are opposed to change who live here from more, but it does not necessarily mean that the population as a whole has those views. Um, yeah, Ann Arbor may not be landlocked. However, if we, um, continue to have people move out further and further, um, traffic will get worse, greenhouse gas are going to get worse. But like people commuting in and not being able to live near their work is, is way, way worse than, than building on a patch of lawn in someone's backyard. Uh, and, uh, I, there's also, people are complaining about the lack of public notice with a lot of people came here apparently because they were notified. So, um, I knew about this. Like, I, I personally don't think, um, that if, if you are paying attention to this sort of stuff, that it is difficult to, to know this is going on. So I appreciate all the work, um, that you have done and, uh, I'm excited about this moving forward. I also don't, I don't think the setback thing is something that I'm particularly concerned about. Uh, if you got to do it to make it work, then cool, but, you know, thanks.
Thank you. If there's anyone else on the line that wishes to address the planning commission, please press star nine on your phone. All right, we will move on to item twelve, which is commission proposed business. Is there any? All right. Seeing none, uh, I will entertain a motion to adjourn moved by Commissioner Milstein, seconded by Commissioner Dish. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Aye, that is everyone. Thank you folks. Have a good night. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.